I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, we want to thank you for all of the blessings that you've given us, especially the students that we get to educate. Our students inspire our staff with every smile, every good grade, every innovative idea and every achievement, along with whatever they are striving to accomplish in life. Please be with our Board of Education as they make decisions affecting our students and staff. Testing days for our students are coming soon, so please be with them as they strive to do their best, as our teachers strive to do their best to help our students. Also be with our men and women of the Armed Forces as they serve and protect and defend this great country. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Present.
Dr. Kincaid?
Here.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Truitt?
Okay, thank you very much. First off, this is a special presentation to the board members in appreciation for their years of service to the children of Pocahontas City. Dr. Pennington.
Well, we just want to, if you'll look at your desk, you have multiple things that have been given to you by different school sites, and then we have a basket for each of you that you can take after the board meeting. So, anyway, thank you. Obviously, we appreciate what you do, and I hope you read the cards. I've already got my favorite one, which, I don't know why I got one, but I'm glad I did. And it says, "Hello, thank you for helping in our schools. All I ask is can we have cupcakes and cookies?"[127.36][127.36](Laughter). And this is a trout, this is from Nathan at Trout Elementary. So, anyway.
That was a good idea.
And he has, also drew a K-State Wildcat. You know, so, he, so, anyway, I thought that, anyway, that was pretty neat, I thought.
Well, thank you to all that provided for us this evening, and appreciate it very much. Moving on, then. Presentation of Employee of the Month and Friend of Education Awards. For Certified Employee of the Month, Kara Anderson, 3rd grade teacher at Woodlands Elementary. Kara.
Woodlands Elementary is delighted that Kara Anderson is being recognized as the Certified Employee of the Month for January 2016. Without question, Kara is very deserving of this award. She is a creative teacher that maintains a lively, fast-paced classroom. Even with the stresses placed on 3rd grade students, she always exhibits a big smile, a positive attitude, and a bubbly spirit. In addition to helping her students master all of the 3rd grade standards, she maintains a number of classroom traditions that her students look forward to every year, such as telling scary stories at Halloween and making gingerbread houses at Christmas. Kara, who represented Woodlands as Teacher of the Year in 2011, 2012, is always willing to lend a helping hand. She currently serves on the building-level team, the Faculty Spirit Committee, and the Textbook Selection Committee. When we asked for volunteers to head up this year's Math and Literacy Night, she quickly volunteered. She served as the Woodlands Accelerated Reader Coordinator for many years, encouraging students to become better readers. She created an "I can do it" attitude toward reading by using AR tags, a monthly AR tunnel run, and the end-of-semester celebrations. The past couple of years, Kara has led the physical movement in the classroom training for the Woodlands staff. She even helped select the furnishings for the new Woodlands office. Mrs. Anderson has never missed a deadline, and she usually completes tasks in advance of deadlines. When we moved back into the renovated Woodlands campus at the end of last school year, she had her classroom ready to go for the coming school year the very first day we were allowed back in the building. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson, for being a part of the Woodlands family. We are very proud to recognize her as the January 2016 Certified Employee of the Month for Pocahontas City Public Schools.[301.02][301.02](Applause).
Kara. Support Employee of the Month, Kathy Swinson, Head Custodian at Central Administration.
Kathy Swinson, the Head Custodian at the new Central Administration Office, is a great help to everyone in this building. Since we moved into the building, this site has remained spotless. Kathy will help anyone with anything at any time. Along with typical custodial duties, Kathy makes coffee, unlocks individual office doors prior to employees arriving, blows leaves from the grounds, cleans even the tiniest spots on the carpet, covers the reception desk when needed, does shredding, and even washes the outside windows in the spring and the summer. She monitors our in-house conference room scheduler and sets up each of our conference rooms perfectly to accommodate whatever event is being held without a reminder from anyone. She even sets up a little hospitality area for interview committees with water, coffee, and snacks. If anyone in this building even mentions anything, they may need done, Kathy responds in a blink of the eye. Kathy takes pride in her work and pride in how this building is maintained. Thanks to her dedication, the Central Administration Building looks as new as it did the day we moved into it. Not only does Kathy have a sense for knowing what needs to be done, she is constantly looking for new ways to improve her impeccable work. For these reasons and many more, the Support Employee of the Month is a well-deserved award for Kathy Swinson. And, I didn't even mention everything that she does off the clock, which is a lot. She's a true asset to this district. Thanks for all you do, Kathy.[421.12][421.12](Applause).
Thank you, Kathy. And for Friend of Education, Shawn Anderson, Community Support for DECA and Marketing Class at the Pocahontas City High School.
Shawn is a great supporter of DECA and marketing education. He has attended several DECA events and provided live remotes, all on his own time, to raise awareness for our program. Shawn makes himself available to my DECA students anytime they need the experience of creating a public service announcement, even at a moment's notice. He is always courteous and patient with my students, and has taught them a lot about the broadcasting business. DECA and marketing education appreciate all the work of Shawn Anderson and Team Radio that they do for our program.[471.02][471.02](Applause).
Thank you very much, Shawn.
Pictures of our work winners before you leave, right out here in the hall.
Time for photos.
In the Exodus.
You don't get in the picture, Ron. You don't, you don't get in the picture.
I kind of can't believe Shawn turned down an open microphone.
No. Yeah, that's true. We didn't, we didn't offer it to him long enough.
My first thought that I thought was curious, I said, "Well, it's not."
Next would be public comments, but I don't have any paperwork on anyone who has asked to speak tonight, so we will go on past that point. Down to discussion topics. Central enrollment slash transfers. Barbara and Terri.
Let me have just a quick slideshow here. Terri and I want to talk about registration and transfer process for our district. Last year was our first year to have central registration, and I can't find.
Barbara, make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
Last year was our first year to have central registration in the district, and it was a learning process. We got lots of positive comments, but we know that there are some things that we need to change and do differently, and we have those plans already in place for this year. A few of our positive comments were, we had fewer forms to complete, and our parents really enjoyed that. We had, it took less time, so things that had taken several hours in past years took no more than 30 minutes if they had multiple kids, and we're talking those that had four or five students in our, in our schools. Parents commented that it was very convenient. They could print off the forms online and bring them in and let us check those, that paperwork and go right through the process. They also commented that it was well-organized, so we had lots of hands on deck to assist, and so the process went smoothly. The staff comments were, we had fewer issues at the beginning of school, so they had fewer papers to shuffle, and they didn't have all of that traffic in their buildings on the first day. All of that, the new students that hadn't been through the enrollment process or registration process were at our registration center instead of in the buildings. We had less comp time accrued. Again, we had less congestion in the site offices during August. We were able to correct site boundaries, so we had more students able to attend their neighborhood schools than in past years, and the paperwork was streamlined. And I handle the homeless and the ELL paperwork. And in past years, it's taken me two or three weeks at the beginning of school to gather all that paperwork from the sites and organize it, and this year, we were able to begin the year with those students, with which students were ELL and which students need to be tested, and which were homeless students that we needed to begin working with immediately. Any questions? Okay, some issues that we incurred. Some patrons did not adhere to the registration window. We had a two-week window, and we were open Tuesdays and Thursdays nights until 7:00, but this process went on for like six weeks. And so, you know, we were open every day, and we learned several things from this. So we will adhere to those windows this next year. We're gonna, as I said, we'll do some things differently. Some students were not on a list at Meet Your Teacher Night, and some of that was our fault, and some of that was the site secretary's fault. They didn't, they did not see the students were there for them to place in classrooms, so we could have corrected that. Some of the issues were, as we went through the registration process, we had a checklist, and some of the students were not submitted, so that final box was not checked, so we could go through and find which students were not completed. So some of that was our fault. Some parents failed to request a transfer during the transfer window, so we had some angry patrons because they had not submitted their transfer request before the deadline, and then overflow. And I'm gonna let Terri talk about the transfer process and the overflow.
The chart that you see, you can all see it, correct, on your, okay. The chart that you see will show you each of our sites, and the number on the left is the number of students that that principal accepted, okay, in the, in the fall. And the number on the right is the number of students that I have had to place at a different site because of overflow. So you can see that we have, we really have very few slots for transfers. And so, when we go into a transfer meeting and we don't have really good numbers, and it's hard to get really accurate numbers during our transfer meeting when we can't get patrons to come in and enroll their kids in a timely manner. So when that happens, then sometimes we have principals that will accept transfers, and then, of course, you know, the next few days, neighborhood kids come in and they don't have room for them. So if you look at the, over on the very end, you'll see the total accepted transfers. You'll see that at each site, the total number of transfers that each principal accepted, and then you'll see the total number of students that have had to be placed on an overflow, transfer to a different building. And no parent is ever happy when that, when that happens, and understandably so. So the total that were accepted were 79, and the total that I have had to place on an overflow transfer as of last week, that's not even this week, I've still, I've had to put some on overflow this week, was 41 at the time that this was made. So this sort of gives you an idea. You can go into that transfer meeting, really cautioning them about taking kids, and then still, you know, it happens, and we're, we have an overflow situation. So that's just for your information.
How many of the 41 had to leave their home school district and go somewhere else?
That's what that 41.
That 41?
All 41. Those are the number of students that are attending a school outside of their attendance zone because we did not have space available for them.
What happened at Union, there were 17 at Union?
Actually, it was the same last year. We have a really big, last year it was a kindergarten group, and this year it was a first-grade group. And there was not room at that site to add another, to add another kindergarten class.
There wasn't a classroom.
Right, yes, yes.
Or a teacher. You'd have to find a teacher or a classroom.
This is August enrollment? You're referring to the?
The 79 were the total that were accepted in August.
Okay.
The 41 have been from August on.
Okay.
As overflow.
So it continues to go?
Oh, yeah, it does. Oh, yes, yes.
So you've got a plan that's gonna clean this up, right?
Well, my plan was be, would be, don't give any transfers.
Well, what does it take? Five votes?
You know, and, because we're gonna have overflow trans, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have overflow transfers anyway, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And so, another thing that it creates is, when I have a parent come to me throughout the year, and they have a reason that they want to transfer, I, it's really hard for me to give anybody a transfer when I have 41 kids on overflow. It's just really hard for me when they come in and they say, "I have this reason, this reason, this reason," that I want my kid to go to another school, and I already have 41 on an overflow transfer because we didn't have room at their neighborhood school.
Terri, you might explain what you mean by overflow. What exactly, when do we cap a classroom?
For our kindergarten, first, and second grade, and third, we cap at 27. So, you know, if you've got 27 in, and another one comes, then I try to find a place, someplace else for them. Then 4th and 5th, we will go up to 30.
Who actually, the 79 that were accepted, did you approve all those, or does the building principal approve them?
The building principal has to accept them. They have to accept the transfers.
They accept the slot, or they accept that individual person?
Individual person.
Yeah, they know who the students are, that's, they apply, so they know who the student is that's asking for the transfer.
So the same reason at this school you get transferred, you may not get transferred at this one, just to tell, assuming there's even an opening, depending on the building principal. They've got that control.
Right.
Yes.
Wow.
So some proposed changes to the transfer policy, because at this point, we have a policy in place that says we, we grant transfers. And it basically says that we grant transfers based on the number, if we have room. So, we have that in place already, and there are some that really try to look at their numbers and be really good about, "I'm sorry, I can't take anybody because I just, I'm afraid I'm gonna keep a neighborhood kid from going." And then there's others that sort of, I guess they maybe think, "I'm gonna be fine." You know, "I've got 27 kids already, surely no more will move in." But it, it seems to always happen. So some proposed changes could be, and again, I can't change the policy, but we could decide not to give in-district transfers at all. And if we were to adopt, if you were to adopt that, then, of course, we would have to say, "The only transfers we're gonna give is if we're completely full, and we have to put you someplace else because of an overflow." I mean, 'cause there's, we still, that still may occur, but at least we wouldn't be saying, "Well, we took some kids into the, your neighborhood school, and that's why you're not getting to go." Does that make sense? We could require principals to reserve two to four slots for neighborhood students in each grade level during the transfer meeting. So if it was in policy, then we could say to the principals, "You can take transfers, but you have to leave this many slots open for your neighborhood kids." And then also, just examine the reasons for transfer requests. Some of the reasons are siblings are grandfathered at the site. You know, we have, we do have issues where you might have accepted a second grader, and then their sibling that's a pre-K or starts pre-K, and they want to go to the same school where their, their sibling is. And of course, you want them to go to the same school where their sibling is. Childcare is close to the school. I have calls about this every month, if not every week, where someone wants to transfer because it's better for them regarding daycare. And if I allowed those transfers to happen for everybody, that it was more convenient for them to go to a different school because of daycare, I would be moving them constantly. So to me, that's not a very good reason, but it's just because we can't accommodate everyone regarding that. Sometimes there's conflicts among families, many of them relocate during the summer, and they've already missed the window because our transfer window is from January 1st to May 1st. So if they move in June, then, so if they're a Trout student and they move in June, then when they go to register, they're not gonna get into Trout. They're gonna have to go wherever their house is. And then staff conflict that cannot be resolved. Once in a while, we have some conflicts between staff and patrons, and it, it can't seem to be resolved, and we make the decision to move students, but that is very rare.
So, Barbara, do you have anything else?
I have one more slide just yet. My registration window for the 2016-17, we're gonna begin pre-K registration February the 29th through March the 11th. Last year, these students registered at their site, and they also came through registration in the summer. We're gonna eliminate that process, and we'll just, and we'll register them during February the 29th through March the 11th, and they will not go through that registration process again. Terri's gonna have a pre-K meeting February the 23rd at West Middle School Auditorium, and that's to accommodate the parents and the, and parking for that parent meeting. Orientation?
It's like an orientation meeting for them, for those parents, to kind of let them know what to expect in pre-K. Normally, every site had one of those, but we're just gonna have one, and all the, all the parents of pre-K age students will be allowed to attend.
So based on these first two bullet points, do we need to come to terms with what we're gonna do with centralized pre-K before you have your meetings?
No.
Yeah, no.
No, we can, we can have the meeting, 'cause what happens, I mean, those things are the same about pre-K.
They are.
So it's, so it's not, it's not different from building to building. So we can have a centralized pre-K meeting, make sure that everybody hears the exact same message, and we can deal with whether or not we actually, I mean, we've, make that move or not, we don't have to decide that by February 23rd.
It is for their information. It's not anything that, I mean, there are some specifics that some principals say, but mainly it's, it's age-appropriate behaviors and curriculum, that sort of thing that we'll talk to them about, so.
Attendance?
Yeah, attendance.
You know, this is a voluntary program, and we, you know, when you sign up, we expect you to attend, and if you don't, you know, we may have to drop you from the program because we have, we have a waiting list of kids who want to, who want to come.
And then things readiness, things that they can do to prepare their child for pre-K.
We will, though, timestamp or, or date and, and stamp the time during pre-K enrollment, and just in case we are full at one site, then we know which patrons were the first to enroll their students and which were the last, so we don't have that, that issue. Registration for grades K through 5 and 7th grade students and new students to the district will be July the 11th through the 14th, and July 18th through the 21st, and we will have Tuesday, Thursday, late evenings until 7:00 during those two weeks. Makeup registration dates will be August the 2nd and 3rd, so we're gonna publicize those heavily. I think that some of our people understand now that if they wait until the week before school, they may not be able to get their child in their neighborhood school. We've already had the transfer meeting at that time, and so those, it's a possibility that those schools are full at this point in time. The transfer meeting will be held on July the 26th, which gives us three or four days to make sure we have everyone into the computer so we can, we have accurate numbers. Online registration will, we'll have online registration for grades 6 and 8 through 12. Our, we'll have a checklist. Our parents will go online and be able to update information that we would normally have done at central registration. This will be open to 7th grade students who have already received their 7th grade immunization and have provided proof to the district during their 6th grade year that that is complete, and we have records of that immunization. And if they do that, then they'll be able to, to go through the online registration process as well. So this will cut our numbers into more than half our students because we'll be dealing with K through 5 and 7th grade students during registration process. So we think that this will be quicker and smoother, and maybe it will give us time to call those parents who haven't come through at that second week to say, "You need to get in here and get your students registered." Any questions?
So you're, so if the, instead of going through the whole group again, people that's already been through this year, for next year, they can just go online and update or whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Now, our elementary students will still have to come in because we still need that proof of residence to make sure that they are in their neighborhood school. But it doesn't matter for middle school and high school because we only have one middle school and one high school. So we don't need to do.
So they don't have to show up, they can just do it online to check it?
Yes, and we'll have computers at the registration center, so if they don't have access to computer at home, they can come there and, and update their students.
If they have not, online, you still, you're gonna contact them. They've gotta be there, been online and said they updated it? If they haven't, they either gotta come in and do it with you or online.
Yes, and we'll be able to, they'll have a submit button, just like we had, that they've completed everything, and Mr. Hills can run a report that tells us which students have not completed that process. And those students will not get their schedule at the beginning of the year, just like it was this year, until they go online and complete that process. And they will have a month, the entire month of, of July to complete that process. So that gives us a few days before students pick up schedules to make some, for sites to make some contacts, just to remind them they need to go through that process.
That pre-K meeting you're having on the 23rd of February?
Yes.
Aren't you gonna have to know if we're gonna have one center versus all the different sites?
Well, I mean, yeah, that'd be nice, but, I mean, we don't, that, that's not something that I have to talk about there. What I, what is normally talked about is what Dr. Pennington said. I talk about the importance of the attendance, that we do have a cutoff of 23 in each class, so it's important that they do get their child registered if they want a slot. We talk about age-appropriate behaviors and just readiness skills that they can work on with them in the summer to prepare them. So at that time, but, but like, right before I have it, I'll speak with Dr. Pennington and ask him exactly what he wants me to address regarding that, the possibility or whether it's a go or not.
And those forms will be dated, and there'll be a timestamp, so we know which parents came in first and which were the last, just in case we run into that issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ladies, you might want to stop here in case we have some, the board has some additional questions, but just, you know, the, the transfer issue is always an interesting issue, and it is a headache. It is a paperwork, I won't say nightmare, but it's, it, you know, there's lots of paperwork involved. It causes lots of angst among staff and among parents. I think there are, you know, we, we kind of talk about the negatives tonight, but, you know, there are some positives. The, the biggest positive is, is you have students in the school that their parents were. want them to be in. And so, that creates immediately a more positive attitude on the part of the parents. Being in a school that you would want to be in, parents being positive has a positive effect on student learning, and we can't just toss that out and say it doesn't matter because it does. You know, I don't know when Ponca City started transferring kids between schools. I know that existed when I came. I know that, and, and, you know, Terri's talked to her colleagues across the state, and it's pretty common in large school districts that have multiple elementary sites for there to be some type of transfer process for various reasons. So while I think that we need to come up with some ways to tighten the process up, that we, that we need to be careful, and, and, because what seems like a good idea right now, when it actually gets to next August, may not solve the problems we thought it was gonna solve. So we have to be careful with this. I think that my experience, after doing this now for 12 years, I'm in, you know, the, of the solutions that Terri proposed, the one that I'm more in favor of would be that we give principals a cap, that you have to hold back three slots or two slots per grade level. But if you look, remember the chart, it wouldn't have mattered how many slots you held back at Union, you were gonna have an overflow. So, so there's always gonna be those circumstances.
I do believe we'll, we will have overflow.
Yeah.
It's just easier to say that we're overflowing someone when a principal didn't take a lot of kids as transfers.
Yeah, so I, so I think we definitely need to determine, the board, we need to determine a cap that we've proposed to you and asked for you to put in policy. Because we have to be able to explain that to parents, to say that, you know, yes, we can put 27 kids in a third-grade class, and yes, there's only 25 kids in that class, but we can't put you in there because there's a cap. So we need to be able to explain that. You know, the biggest issue, and I think we saw that again this year, and I think we learned some things this summer, we learned we had some people that were enrolled in schools that they had been giving us incorrect information for a number of years, exactly where they lived. But the other thing that happened, and this happens all the time, is we have lots of movement in this community over the summer. And for whatever reason, when, when folks make those relocation decisions, they don't, and it's probably because we've done transfers, they don't think that, that's, they don't, they don't stop to think that I'm moving from Liberty to Woodlands. And I don't wanna go to school at Woodlands because my, and we have this, my family has always gone to Liberty. You know, we have some of that, too. It's interesting, the reasons that people wanna transfer. It's not always what you think it would be. Some of it's childcare, some of it's conflict with family members. A lot of it is, this is, that's where I went to school. I grew up in Ponca City, I went to school at Liberty, I want my child to go to school at Liberty, or I want my child to be at Garfield, or I want him to be at Union or Trout. So it's just interesting, the, the decisions that folks make, but we have boundaries for a reason. That's why we go to the trouble to draw them, and, and so we need to, you know, we need to, we need to, again, find a way to make this better. In the plan that was presented, one of the things that I think that we're in agreement on is that those students that are currently grandfathered in would stay grandfathered in, that we would not, after we've already granted students transfers, we would not force them out, we'd let them stay in. And so, again, over time, in about, you know, three years, you would have fewer and fewer transfers in those buildings. Because the 79 number does not represent all the students that are at sites on transfers. That's just the students that transferred to a school this year. There are other kids that have been there, if they're a fifth grader, they may have been there for four years on a transfer. So we need to keep that in mind, too.
Barbara and Terri, are you all gonna come back with a, that one slide he's referencing that starts with no transfers and all the legitimate reasons why you probably would accept? Are you all gonna come back with a, here's what we think the policy should be? So we'll see something.
We will, we just kinda wanted to kinda get some, whether the board wanted us to even deal with this, you know, you're happy with the way things are, you're open to considering changes, your support, we're just trying to get a feel for, you know, where the board is so that we know what direction we need to push as we do this. I mean, we don't wanna bring you a proposal that there's no interest in the board in
Bring us back something.
Okay. That's what we wanted to know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Make it easier for you.